So if anybody wants to, you're more than welcome. And the meeting policy. Okay, 6:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order. If everyone will please rise, we'll say the pledge and a prayer. Dr. Whaley.
Father, I was asking you to bless tonight. And bring the needs of our city before you ask that you bless our city. Do God do it? We magnify the name of Jesus and clear the deed of our Lord. We just thank you for this state, Father. We just thank you for your blessing for us to have an election. And we just ask that you bless this city, this county, and this state as opposed to elected leaders for the next period. I'm just grateful for the blessings that you give and excuse and allow us to live. The information is clear.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we'll have the approval of minutes from previous meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Please, everyone, pull your mics back and turn them on.
Yes, there's actually some things on this that needs to be corrected, so I think we should put it off till next month to approve them.
Okay, do I have a... Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table the previous minutes.
Okay.
Till next.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on that. Dr. Whaley? Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Kristi? And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. The next item is approval of agenda or motion to amend the agenda, and I do have a couple of things I'd like to ask. The first one, under 5A, we did receive a request for removal of that variance, so we'd like to remove the Cyril's variance. And I would also like a motion to remove the extending of the financial audit, because that's actually, we don't need to do that at this point, so... Do I have a motion?
A motion to remove?
To remove...
Number 7B.
Yeah, 7B and 5A.
Oh, great. I made the motion that we remove 7B and 5A from the...
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we will begin with public hearings, and we will move on to 5B. And I will let... Actually, Mandy, our consultant, has lost her voice, so she's not going to be able to join us by phone, so our attorney's going to take over at this point in her place.
This is a... This is an application for a variance from the minimum front yard or front setback. My understanding is that the... Well, the front yard setback is typically 25 feet measured from the right-of-way. I believe the applicant is here. There was some confusion, I think, on staff as to exactly what the requested variance is. So I think that's a question for the applicant. I think staff was inclined to recommend that the council not approve this variance, not finding a hardship, you know, sufficient to approve the variance. But we do have a public hearing, and I'm assuming the applicant's here.
Okay. And so at this time then, we will open it up for the public hearing, and we will allow...
Can we ask the...
Yes.
As I understand it, this is a atypical situation in that the right-of-way extends 30 or 40 feet from the edge of the road out into this sort of front yard of this property. Is that so or not?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay.
And I didn't do the analysis, so I'm just kind of filling in for Mandy, but...
So let's let... Actually, if you will, please, I'll allow you to come up to the front, and if you will, yeah, state your name. Yes, yep. And we will allow 10 minutes for both the applicant... Well, for those in favor and those opposed to this. And of course, the council can extend that time if needed. Okay?
I'm Jennifer Sims. I'm one of the applicants, and this is Jake Sims, who is our builder and...
So the right-of-way is of like 30, 35 feet from the road, and then our property line, so that we would have to build 25 feet from there. So we were asking if we could build up closer to the property line. And then still, the house would then still be 30 to 35 feet off of the road. There's a power line that kind of runs in between, which extends the right-of-way.
TDS ran a line straight down the middle of the property many decades ago, and they actually have prescriptive rights on it, so it's nothing that if we choose to move it. But they... So the right-of-way is way further back, so our... We would basically be building the house at the very back of the property, which would look, you know, atypical to what actually the house, the homes look like. And probably the reason for this code is that to get it off of the road, a little bit off McKinney Street, but without being 45, 50 feet from the front door to the road.
Okay. At this time, I would like, because Mandy's not able to be here, our consultant, do any of the council members have questions for the applicant?
And I think the question for staff was, what is the request measured from the right-of-way, not from the edge of payment, so that we know exactly what the variance request is?
We would like to get it up to at least 15 feet from the property line, but if we could get a little more, that would be great.
And when you say from the property line, you mean measured from the right-of-way? So 15 feet from the right-of-way?
Oh, sorry. So moved up 15 feet, so 10 feet from the right-of-way.
Okay.
So it would still be 10 feet past the right-of-way, which is 20 feet in some, deep in some areas, you know? So it's just kind of bringing it in closer to the right-of-way. There's still going to be a huge gap between the right-of-way and the start of our property, but we just need 10 feet.
And just so the council's clear, I think it was staff's recommendation that if you were to find a hardship, that the variance would be measured 10 feet from the right-of-way. In other words, the front yard, the setback would be 10 feet from the right-of-way, and that would be okay with you guys?
Yeah, that would help us a lot. Yes, sir.
I don't want my house cantilevered or...
Yeah, we had to build the property up 40-ish feet, and from the property line, our hill has to come up, because it can't be straight. And so then that puts a very small part of the property that we can build the house on. So the house is almost the same size as the area that we can build. We're actually, we'd have to cantilever the house over that if we couldn't get a little bit of variance.
Does anyone have a question from them? And then we'll allow other people in the audience to speak in favor.
I have house plans. I have pictures of it all.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? What are your neighbors' positions on your request?
I don't know my neighbor's position on the request, but looking at the surrounding properties, every single home on McKinney Street is very close to the property, way, way closer. I would say they're all built, there's just a few mobile homes and a few smaller houses or the end, they're all built really close to the road. So I would think that they would like to see our home more similar to what the rest of the homes look like, so it's, you know, way off of the road, because theirs are 10, 10 feet. I don't even know if you could park a car in most of the few little homes. They usually, they have, all have both side drives, because their houses are like right up button against each other.
So they do not, they do not comply with that setback?
That's right.
Historically?
Not even close.
Okay.
They all look like they were built way before this code was ever...
Well, I actually had Denny go out and stake it, and it's very close to the road. So if you get 15 feet variance, if you take and just set 10, 10 feet back, it's really close to the road. And he said that the, the right-of-way wasn't what y'all thought it was. And I said, are you sure? So, I mean, he staked it, and it's right up, not far from the road.
So Denny being...
He's a, he's a staff member.
Okay, so he staked it?
Yeah, just for me to look at how close it would be to the road.
So we had Hussey Gay Bell come out and actually do a, do a stake-in survey?
Well, you know, I don't know. I just, I just asked him to, you know, find out what the right-of-way was, because even the zoning person said that she thought that there was not as much as y'all may think that there were.
Okay, well, that would been, that would achieve the same goal. If the right-of-way is not as deep as we thought it was, then we're achieving, you know, that would...
True, true.
Yes.
But it still looked like, though, if you're only getting, if you're, if there's only a 10-foot setback, it's still, from where he staked it, looked like it was pretty close to the road.
No.
Is it not?
It's way far off the road.
Where Hussey Gay Bell staked it, it's more than 55, 60 feet, and that's where we can start building.
That's where the front door would be. That's not, that's the front door, not the back corners or anything. That's, the stakes that are out there are actually...
Are the, you said they went out and put the stakes, are the stakes still there?
I don't know for sure.
Did Denny base that on the survey, or did he just... Where did he get?
To me, he said he checked on what the right-of-way on that street was, and I think...
And you said TVA, yeah, so...
I think George, because I came in to check on this again today, and I thought George was going to go out with him, but I didn't end up seeing...
Can you get closer to the microphone?
And if, yeah. And of course, what he... Denny could have been looking at utilities as far as city utilities, sewer, water, et cetera, not the TVA line. Because that happens, this happens several places, like where Danny Melman owns that little fruit stand. It goes probably its way back. In fact, that fruit stand's almost taken into it. It goes right in front of it. So there are areas where that happens. And I would tend to trust your surveyor, but... And that was attached, I believe, to the, your application.
So I, do you mind if I approach? So I'm assuming that these stakes right here, the ones that Denny put that are like hugging the bank, and these are the ones that... Way back here is the ones that start, that's where Hussey Gay Bell says we can start based on it. So like, that's like, like way back in the, you know, see, that's a huge distance.
That is way back, but that's not what Denny said, though. So there's, there's a discrepancy somewhere.
Okay, so would we go off Denny's for permits? And can we build off Denny's?
Can I see that?
Well, I mean, it's too close to the road if it's, if it's, if it's where, right there.
We don't need that much. I mean, we don't want to build from Denny's stakes. That's, I don't want to hear that.
Well, he's saying, okay, but, okay, so you're wanting to go back farther than that?
Oh, yeah.
So then, then, then I think...
Like 25 feet off the road.
If, if what, if what Denny's is, it's 10 feet, then you're, you're within it then, because, and I think that the issue that he said was, is that the right-of-way's only like...
So where are you talking about in your house?
I think he said 30 feet? And I think on this thing, it says 60. Are y'all thinking it's 60 feet?
So the, the right-of-way, where the, I'm sorry, where the property line starts is 35 feet off, or is like 30, 35 feet off the road, and then we have to build 25 feet from that currently.
Yes.
I want to see where the stakes are. Because I didn't know that you went out and put the stakes.
And you have your survey there, too.
I think the survey was part of the package this time because of my house.
Okay.
The house is only 46 feet.
Now, here's, here's the other thing, of course, it's, you know, it's supposed to be for variance, or supposed to be for hardship, so is this a hardship?
You can't build it like...
You're saying you can't...
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to build it. The house is cantilevered in the back. So I picked out the Denny's house, and I have to find it on here. If we have to go 40 feet off.
Well, this is the 20...
Well, I believe that the staff analysis was based on your actual survey that you sent in, which did show that setback. So the way I would look at it, guys? When I get everybody's attention?
Since we're trying to achieve the same goal, we don't want to be close to the road. We want it between 50 feet off the road at least, you know, away from the road, which is, you know...
So compared to your neighbor there, that's pretty close to the road, too, would your house be sitting that close?
Okay, we're, I need to have a motion to extend the time for the applicant, which we would also have to extend time for anyone who's opposed. Do I have a motion to extend it five more minutes?
Did you get your questions answered? Let's go ahead and extend it for another five minutes. I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We would be 30 feet off the road. Like, that's what we prefer to be, like away from the road, 30 feet.
We still want to be able to comfortably park the vehicle between the house and the road.
Okay, let me interject something here, and I'm going to defer to our attorney. I want, I think we need to go based on what the survey said and what their application was, because if the survey says this, I think we're going to have to get into a survey discrepancy. If the survey says it goes back 35 feet, I think let's make our variance based on that. Would you not agree?
Well, I, I think we've got a fundamental issue in the measurement. What I hear you guys say is, so many feet from the property line. What the zoning ordinance says is so many feet from the right-of-way. And so the real question, it seems to me, is where is the right-of-way line? And then can you adhere to the 25-foot setback from the right-of-way line? Or do you need relief from that? And I don't know, sitting here, you know, I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know where the right-of-way line is, but that's where we measure the front setback from.
Okay, so it's from the right-of-way?
It's from the right-of-way.
Not from our property line, which seems to be like, according to the surveyor...
I mean, in theory, there could be something between your property line and the right-of-way, for example. There could be, somebody else owns that property, or there's an easement, or whatever the case may be. For me, my issue is, I don't know where we're measuring from. I know the ordinance says we measure from the right-of-way. So if we know where that is, and then we go 25 feet in from that, then that would be the setback. And so the question would be whether you can live with that, or whether you need something...
So the, the right-of-way that looks like is staked on here, it looks to me like it's close to where the property line is. And so we were trying to see if we could get closer to the property line. The right-of-way doesn't cut into our property.
Throughout the city, is the right-of-way generally five or 10 feet from the edge of the asphalt?
Yeah, normally, it's like 30 feet from the center. Is that not correct? Yeah, and it varies in this town.
It does vary. But I think that's what Denny said. I'm positive that...
From the center line of the road.
He thought it's 30 feet from the center line. And that, but that street is only about 7, 16, almost 17 feet wide. So maybe the street, eight feet, and then another 24 feet to the property line.
Hey, Joe, step out here a minute. Can you go in there on the computer and pull up their, their zoning? Can you pull up a picture of it? Can you print us off one, please? Thank you, Joe.
Do you need to see this?
I want him to pull it off of ours, so it's more of a picture than lines. Can you pause their time, Amy?
Do you want to table this, Jack, till the end of the meeting, when you have a chance?
I want to look at the plaid at first. I want to see what we're talking about, see if we can figure out exactly what we're looking at, rather than lines. Lines are hard for everybody to read. If you've got a picture and you kind of got an idea where things are, it gives you a little more perspective.
What I'm saying is, do you want to proceed through the agenda, and then we come back to this after those pictures?
At the end of the meeting? Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Do I need a motion? I mean, we just need to be mindful. We need to give everybody equal time, so...
I do have the survey. If I can email that to somebody and they can print it off, maybe I'll look at it.
Go in and speak with Joe and Becky, and then we'll come back to you guys at the end of the meeting. Okay? So let's have a motion to move that to the end.
I move that we move this to the end of the...
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving to the next item, the consent agenda, and this is just renewal of the ETC Cable franchise agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And let's do a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley? Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, these are action items. A motion to approve the new holiday schedule to reflect the same holidays as Fenton County, and it is in your packet, if you've all had a chance to look over that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Moving down to, to 7C, a motion to approve the 10% increase in commitment for the Fenton County Library area. Did you all have a chance to review that in your packet?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. We'll start with you, Bill Bivens.
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay. D, an ordinance of the City of Blue Ridge, Georgia, establishing general purchasing regulations pursuant to the charter under purchasing. And I believe we did add two new items today, so would you like to discuss those, and then we'll vote?
Yeah, this is a second reading of the ordinance to establish a new purchasing policy. The only difference, the staff recommended two additional changes, so there is, there are two differences in the version that is in the packet. One of those is at the end of Section B, little i, where it's changed from "Council shall be notified of such purchases via email" to "via an emailed weekly report from the city clerk." And then Section 1C, little 2i, the addition of the following sentence, "Recurring materials or supplies necessary for day-to-day operations of the city departments are covered under this exemption, provided they are requested by the department head."
I just noticed something they, I guess Becky done this, said "from the city clerk," but could that not be from anyone that's on this? Because what if the city clerk's not here, or, and then right now, you know, we're kind of, it says "via email, weekly report from the city clerk." Could we just put a weekly report?
And just leave off "from the city clerk"?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
So the motion would be, as I understand it, to approve ordinance number BR 2024-14 as presented, but with the phrase "from the city clerk," struck from Section 1B, little i.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on that. Bill Bivens?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jack?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the next one. So Becky, if you will, please come out. So we have three items, which Becky will be here to answer questions for you guys. I think she's gone over a lot of this with you already. Motion under 7A, or 7E, a motion to approve change order request for the downtown storm system improvement in the amount of $115,455. And I will let you kind of explain it, and then we'll vote.
So part of that, they discovered was going to have to be done to route the storm drain under Mountain Street. I believe that portion is 70-something thousand dollars of that amount. The other amount is to replace some terracotta clay sewer pipe along Mountain Street and turn it down to Robert's Way. While we've already got that street tore up and shut down, we feel it's best practice to go ahead and replace what we find that's a problem in the area. And terracotta, of course, hasn't been put in in 20 or 30 years, so we know that's an old sewer line, and we want to go ahead and replace that while we have that open.
Yeah, I think that's smart.
Is that a bowl of terracotta, or just a patch?
That's going to be all the terracotta in the work area from manhole to manhole, so that when you pave that street...
Is the terracotta past that? You said manhole to manhole?
Manhole to manhole.
Is it more past it?
There would be, there would be more on the other side of the railroad track. We're not currently paving that. We're going to have that section of the road tore up. We can do that as a later project.
Okay.
But right now, this is already going to be open and tore up, so we need to address everything in the project area while we have that open.
That makes sense, a later time. How much, how much more terracotta are we talking about? Do you know?
We don't.
I'm not asking for a foot, approximately.
No, we don't. I would imagine, Jack, that the entire length of Mountain Street is probably terracotta, so our next project would be the west side of the railroad tracks on Mountain Street, all the way up.
Okay.
Of course, and once we do that, we'll have to get permission from GDOT and...
Yeah, so going under the railroad track is going to require another permit from G-Rail.
The reason I'm asking you this is because I want it on record, and I want the public to know what we're spending their money on.
Yes.
So we're looking at $115,455?
That's correct.
To, to remove the terracotta pipe from manhole to manhole?
Right, and that's also to do an insertion valve on the water line, so that was part of what was going to have to be done to reroute the storm drain that's coming through there. So in order to get around that, they've got to cut some water lines off. They've got to do an insertion valve to do that. And then they were also going to have to remove part of this sewer line and replace it anyway. So we're actually going from manhole just up the hill on Mountain, up toward East First, all the way down toward Robert's Way, and then from that manhole over toward Robert's Way to replace another section.
Okay, and that's all in this bid?
Correct.
This additional cost?
Correct, and that's going to be wrapped up in your project that's already existing. So it's a change order to that project.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Okay, Becky, to make, to make sure I'm clear, and Bill and I went to, we met with Denny and Matt a couple weeks ago, and he mentioned this. So this is for, this is not storm drain, this is sewer, right?
Well, the additional replacement of that terracotta line, I think the original estimate from North Georgia Concrete was 70-something thousand dollars to get the storm drain portion done. We're adding the additional amount to replace the terracotta lines.
For the sewer, for sewer?
Right, for 40-something thousand.
And that's, that's Mountain Street, up Robert's Way, and you're going all the way up Mountain Street to the top?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because if you got to repave, then you might as well do it all now.
That's what we wanted to do, that Denny said that section is going to be paved, and he wants to take care of that entire area.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Bill Bivins?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next item, motion to approve the proposal for modification for the Blue Ridge wastewater plant in the amount of, let me put my glasses on, this is big, $579,210. So tell us, give us more detail about that, please.
So this portion of the project was in the original scope when the bids went out.
Speak a little louder.
Can you hear me? Okay. So this was in the original scope of the project. When
the bids came back in for the wastewater treatment plant rehab, the bids came in higher than had been estimated.
Okay.
And we had to remove some portions of the project in order to get within the $5 million that Jifa had allowed for the wastewater treatment plant rehab. Jifa has since said that due to inflation, they are increasing those grants across the board by 10%. So they're offering up an additional 10% you'll have to do as a Jifa grant modification. It will cover $500,000 of this project in with our current sewer treatment plant rehab project. The city will be responsible for $79,000 and some change out of pocket.
On a $5 million?
On a $5 million, yes.
Grand.
Yeah, 79,000 out of the half a million we're going to have to come up with this year, which we have. I've spoken with the finance director, the 40-something thousand from the previous project we just discussed. This project and then the next one on the agenda, we have the cash flow to do those projects.
Okay. Any other questions?
And just to let you guys know, this is your Headworks bar screen. This is where the main pump station brings everything into the wastewater plant. So it, it literally screens out the solids coming into the plant.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Hang on one second, though. That's, that's putting new, it's new. It's not just fixing it. It's, it's new. Everything's new.
Correct. That will be new.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Bill Bivins?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay. Then the next item, motion to approve the old highway, East First, East First Street, manhole, and main rehab due to aging infrastructure.
So we also have a paving project coming up for East First Street, and we've had some issues with the sewer main that runs along the area of East First Street in front of Sue's Bar, or Sue's Burgers and the barbecue restaurant. Upon further investigation, that's also a terracotta pipe. It is only a four-inch sewer pipe, and it also does not have the fall that it should have going into the manhole. So there are several issues going on with that sewer main right there. We're going to replace about 600 feet of sewer line, give it the proper slope so that it flows into the manholes correctly, and replace three manholes in that area. So we're getting rid of more terracotta pipe. We're getting rid of some old brick manholes that the integrity has been compromised over the years. So again, these are parts of the system that are 20, 30 years old or more. They're in need of being rehabbed. And we're waiting on additional quotes to come in. We know we can do the project for the $94,000 I have on the budget, so I'm asking the council to approve that budget amount, and let me send you the quotes as they come in, so that you guys can see that we're selecting the cheaper quotes. But we need to move on this according to your street supervisor and project coordinator. They want to pave this area in June. If we don't, if we wait till the June council meeting, we're not going to be able to like, order materials and line up contractors in time to get that done.
So you're basically just asking for us to give you the okay to use your budget money?
To you, to use the $94,000.
That you already have in your budget.
So that's the money James, the finance director has confirmed to me that we have the cash flow for.
Uh-uh.
In, in the event that this puts us over budget at some point during the year, I will come back to you guys and ask for a budget amendment. Projects happen sometimes when we put them on schedule. Sometimes they don't due to, you know, materials not getting in, or not being able to get contractors, or things delay them. We don't want to prematurely ask for a budget amendment if we don't need it, but these projects could cause us to ask for that. The cash flow is there, but we didn't know we were going to need it for these projects back in July or August when this budget was planned.
Okay. This is the only quote we've got, the $94,000?
That's, that's a combined estimate from my quotes that I have right now on labor and materials.
And that I think's what's in the budget, too. Yep, correct.
That's what we want to ask, yes, for the $94,000.
Okay. Any questions? Any more questions?
I have one more question for, for you, Becky.
Yes, sir.
And I just need an educated guess.
Yeah.
We are replacing terracotta pipe in the city. How percentage do you think of our pipes right now in the city are terracotta? What are we looking into the future?
I would say you probably have 20, 25% terracotta pipes.
Okay, good, because I was thinking 50 or 60%.
We have been replacing on a yearly basis as problems arise. It would be nice to be more proactive, but, you know, finances and staff limitate those abilities.
Okay, so you're thinking 20, 25%?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve spending up to $94,000?
So moved.
From our budget? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote, starting with Bill.
Yes.
Okay, Christie? Jack?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, they, we were contacted by Creative Illuminations, and they're actually here tonight. They, we have a contract already for downtown for Christmas lights. They've asked to present a proposal for city hall, and they have given you an amount for both Christmas decorations and for just Memorial Day going through the Fourth of July. If you wanted to do just the Fourth of July, you know, Memorial Day to that, it would be $3,330, and you have, you have actually graphics in your packet. If you wanted to do the entire, the entire, it is, let's see, for Christmas and, that, let me pull it up here. I believe it's $8,000. Yeah. Yeah, that, $8,000 is just for the Christmas. Okay. Would you all like to discuss? Is anyone interested in moving forward with that?
I'd be interested in hearing what the others say.
Okay. Would you like to come up and present? And you do, if you want to look on your iPads, you do have sample work, the graphs. Okay. And if you will, just state your names.
Michelle Ward.
And Jason Ward.
Okay, and speaking.
Sorry, Michelle Ward.
Okay, tell us a little bit about what you're doing, and then I can ask questions of what you're wanting to do.
So we're a fully insured LLC. We're, basically, we do custom install, custom installation. We use commercial grade products and decor. We provide free service calls with our bids and then total uninstall. We're decorating service essentially. We've done, here in Blue Ridge, we did United Community, we did the Gilmer Chamber of Commerce and a few other buildings right now. On Blairsville, United Community.
So have you had a chance to look in your, at your packet?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions for them, anyone?
So what you have illustrated here is what you plan on doing for the city hall?
Yes, sir. We can do more, we can do less, but that's what we've put together as a proposal.
Yeah, we got it. We can get that done this week, in the next two days, for the red, white, and blue, and we did up through July, so you'd get Memorial Weekend, all the way through the Fourth of Weekend, and then we can leave it up, take it down whenever you'd like in July. The Christmas package, we can do as early as October if they're on timers, so you can plug it in when you're ready if you want it on all of November. Some people have it go on the beginning of November, some wait till after Thanksgiving. And then it goes till January, so it'd be on all through the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Okay.
We do some work at the railroad also. We do some other cabins, and we do some other businesses downtown.
I think we need to check first to see if the chamber with the hotel motel tax can help with this. I don't know that they can. They did with the Christmas lights, but I would think it's worth checking first.
Mm-hmm. I'll agree with that.
Okay. So do, so.
Do we want to table it then until we do some, what do you want to do?
I just say.
You don't, you don't have to take action on it, Tony. I mean, you can just. So that's where we are.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I'll ask you about them. We have a member of the council that seems to have expertise on getting stuff around the street and stuff decorated, including flags and patriotic stuff. Has that council member studied this and have an opinion?
I don't know. Hmm. Yeah, we have, if you've not noticed, but the park is very pretty right now. We have a lot of patriotic flags and the memorial. We have flowers around it now, and we want to thank, actually, Joe and Christie did a great job on that, so thank y'all. So what, do you have any thoughts on this for the office?
I think just checking to see about if they could, if the chamber could help out would probably be smart.
Yep. Okay. All right. So I believe that concludes that part discussion items. We have none, no reports. Public comment, you can have, if anyone would like to come up and give a public comment. You have three minutes. Please state your name. And, okay, no one? Okay. You have to state your full name, please.
No, thank you.
That's part of our policy, so you will need to state your name.
Okay, then just don't recognize. Is anybody else?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Okay, we do need to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
Do we need to look at the?
Oh, gosh, I forgot you guys.
We're going to look.
Forgot you guys. Yep. And Joe's back there, ready to go. So, yeah, okay, yeah, come back in. Amy, are you keeping the time for the opposition, if there is any? Okay.
Just reminder, Jennifer Sims and Jake Sims.
Oh, I, I'm fine. I'm not voting, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Where's the property line, Joe? Do you know? Where's our right of way, approximately? Well, we can't go by this because this is not going to be accurate. Okay. So where, do you know where Denny posted, where he staked? Okay. Angie, do you know where Denny staked on this, what you have in your hand here? This, this copy?
Yeah, there's, there's not really any much of a way that I can, but it was close to the bank. I mean, it was actually sitting on the bank.
And the bank is the tree line here?
Oh, hang on a second here.
Tree line here is the bank.
I'm not, I see. Which, which was what is which here?
This would be the bank, right, the tree line is?
Now, this is, this is the bank over here, so this is the key street right here, so it was, it was like, it might be a little closer.
That's where, that's where.
I mean, it was close. I mean.
It's where Denny staked it, about right here?
See, see, the thing about this, 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 this picture of this, this is like a, 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 put in here. So when the dirt's, it's not, the dirt's not all the way up to the road level.
Mm-hmm.
So it was kind of, because I was going like, that looks like, that looks like that's 10 feet. He said that's 10 feet, you know, but the way the, the difference in the elevation, it was, I mean, it just looked like it was close to the road.
Yes, please.
On the survey that I sent, the property line and the right of way are that solid line. The two dotted lines are the road.
And that's based on a certified surveyors?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So my suggestion would be to go by that instead of what Denny, because I don't know if Denny had any actual verification of that, and obviously, your surveyor did. Yeah.
And we're, we're requesting that we can be 10 feet from the property line, which would put us 35 to 40 feet from the road.
Yeah.
But our property line, and it's, it is asking from the right of way, but, but it's the same line. The property line and the right of way are the same. So the right of way is not on our property.
Okay.
So the house would be at least 35 feet from the road, not the center of the road, the edge of the little tiny road.
Okay. Did you all hear that? So 35 feet from the actual road?
Edge of the road, yes, for the.
Yep. Yep. And a lot of the setbacks on that are just 20 feet, so, yeah.
Right. So the driveway would be 35 feet long, just like when you go up, you know, Second Street, some of those new houses that they put in, those duplexes. I measured those, and those are shorter than what we're looking to do. Those are the new driveways and the, you know, the new things like that. So we're either further back than some of those new properties that are, are built up on, on Second.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions for them before we call for opposition? And you got, you hit your one second mark. Okay, Amy, if you will, give the same amount of time for opposition, please, which I think was probably around 15 minutes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, we will call anyone from the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this variance. Okay. Okay, so at this time, the public hearing is closed, and the council can move forward with either discussion or voting. So do I have a motion?
Well, let me say something. I'm, I'm not going to vote on this. I was just asking questions because I do have property right across the street. I don't know that that really is a conflict, but I'll just speak.
Consider that a conflict?
Well, I'm, I mean, I think she can recuse herself if she decides she wants to recuse herself.
Okay.
I want to, I want to, I don't like tabling things because it puts things in an improper perspective, I believe, but at this point, I don't have enough information to make a decision. I want to table this, and I want to go out and look at the property myself and invite any other council members that want to do that, to do that. So I make a motion, we table.
All right, can I, if we do that, I'd like somebody to go out there with a can of paint and draw the line on the ground that's 35 feet from the edge of the road, and another one that's on the edge of the right of way. Because as I constructed this in my mind, it looked to me like the request really was reasonable, given how the other houses in the city relate to the pavement, and that this is probably not totally unique, but a relatively unique position. So if we got a big old yellow line that tells us one thing and a green line that tells us something else, I would be pleased to see that, and I would second your motion, put this off for a month and draw lines of the dirt.
I would like to see where the right of way is, where the setback is, and where the house is going to be.
Yeah.
So this gentleman being the builder can, can pin the house. I mean, he can drive stakes and show where the house is, and then we can get somebody out to look and see where everything is, right?
I think the discrepancy, too, let's figure out if it's, do we, you know, where is Denny getting his information? We know where they've gotten there, so let's make sure we're all on the same page going forward, so.
That makes sense to me.
Go ahead.
Well, the other thing, though, is, is that, you know, variants are really supposed to be for hardships. If the property, there's a hardship on the property. But on this one, I mean, I don't know if maybe actually saw it, and you can't tell it on this, but, but on this one, though, because dirt had to be brought in, you can access the property from the back. Am I correct? Yeah. Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't access it from the back even before, even before you put the dirt. And so now that you've got the dirt in, it's still, I could still see it being a hardship. Me.
The pitch of the land is a hardship for the building as it now sits. I mean, I think that was clear from the presentation.
Well.
Would you like to see the house where we, where we'd like to put it, 35 feet from the road? Would you like to see that laid out, or where it would be, if we had to go further back?
If we could do both with different color stakes, that, that would be grand. So we could actually take a look and see what we're talking about. I really don't feel comfortable voting on something that I haven't looked at that's going to determine, you know, your interests, honestly, ma'am. So what I would like to do is look at it and see what we're talking about, and see if there's a hardship, and see if we can issue the variance or if we shouldn't, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And the only thing I would add is that I think it's fine for you to give the different measurements and all that, but the one we really need for sure is the distance or the requested difference from the right of way line, because that's going to determine what the variance is going to be. So the other stuff is informational, but in order to be able to approve the variance and know what the variance is, we need to know where the right of way is.
I agree. So I've made the motion. It's been seconded. You second it, Doc? You're seconding that motion?
Okay, let's go back, and we'll have a roll call vote on this. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
I'm recused.
Yes.
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Now we can go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay.